To start the meeting, do the roll call and and pledge allegiance to the passed unanimously.
Right, good, thank you.
I just thought for that record.
For your record, right. So, welcome to our planning commission meeting. Like to get do a do a roll call. On the up to my right, we've got Shelley Nazer. Next, Brian Hankey is not not here, and I'd like to excuse him. And Brian Marble is hopefully going to be able to join us as all alternate chairman. But in in the meantime, we'll be trying to get technology working so that he can join us. Michael Fortune, like to excuse him as well, he's not able to be with us this evening. My name is Bob Washburn. And we have Joe Chambers here, my left. I would like to start with a pledge of allegiance. Joe, would you mind reading us?
By pledge of allegiance, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, the first order of business is to is to prove the minutes from our last meeting. So, does does anyone have comments that they'd like to make regarding the minutes from our meeting? Uh, Shirley, you weren't here, but
No, I was planning to explain, do I do I need to vote for the call? Okay, yeah, um, I I do not see anything wrong with the minutes, and as far as I can tell, they uh correspond correctly with the video recording.
Okay, um, I have a few things that I've gone over with Ty. And line eighteen uh says Bob Washburn, who is designated alternate, will now need a W in there, now be a full-time voting member. On line sixty-two, uh, we talks about right, right? Right of ways, it says right of ways, but I think it's either right of way or rights of way if we have more than one. And we we talked about that, Ty, I don't know uh if we decided if anybody who would like to decide if it's rights of way or just right of way. With regards to the curb gutter, and as the city is mostly concerned with the right of way or rights of way, anyway. That, I I would think. Ryan, do you think it's right to, or is there more than one?
I would think, I would say right of way.
Right of way, that's okay.
It's a common way we would say that, whether it's right or wrong, it's just a common.
Okay, all right, great, so make it right of way. And line sixty-nine, Mrs. Buckley cited that the the current issues on Sherwood Drive and that parts of sides of the road are collapsing, not parts for sides. Then in line eighty, this was somewhat confusing to me, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and eighty. On line eighty, they are responsible for ensuring the project is completed correctly, one step at a time, and they appears to be referring to the engineers, I don't think that that's correct. But it's not clear to me who they are. Who are responsible for ensuring the project is completed correctly, step by step. So I would assume that's the contractor is responsible. That'd be fair to say change date to contractor or
Well, let me
Line eighty, it's seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty. I'll just read it out, it says, the the process is designed to protect the city by ensuring developers meet code standards and live by them. Engineers are responsible for ensuring that the land is properly surveyed and laid out according to the plan. They are responsible for ensuring the project is completed correctly, one step at a time. Not sure if the engineers that are responsible to to make sure that happens.
Per our conversation, I changed it to developers. I hope that's a better word.
Any any other comments, anybody?
I like the word developer then better.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's let's make a developer then. And then, line eighty-five says citizens should be aware of potential issues and take necessary steps to ensure the project meets city standards. And I don't think citizens or homeowners are responsible to make sure the project meets city standards. They 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 should be aware that it has met, that the project has met the city standards, but they're not responsible to make sure that the project meets the standard.
Because who said that? What did, if that's what?
This is something that the planning commission outlined, the permit process, and that permits are issued based on minimum uh improvements and a letter of acceptance. However, there may not be documentation in between. For example, building permits are issued based on inspection and review, but they are not guaranteed. Citizens should be aware of the potential issues and take necessary steps to ensure the project meets city standards. Now, we can change it to met city standards.
I don't know if we're combining two conversations there because we did talk about the the property owner has a responsibility to make sure that their house to work with their contractor, to make sure that their house and their lot is done accordingly. We don't get off property with the city, the city keeps between the right-of-way lines. So if we're, depends where we're talking, whose responsibility that is, so could be a citizen's responsibility if you're talking about the actual private property part. I'm not sure.
Take necessary steps to ensure the project meets city standards.
I I would say that the contractors, contractors should certainly be aware of issues and think, so if it was a contractor, so contractor would be there. But citizens, you ultimately have the responsibility of the contractor, although the contractor would be the one that should know the the city standards. Anytime somebody somebody constructs a subdivision, we go over the building and oftentimes the owner of that project is there for that. It could be, it could be contractor, or I'd have to look, I'd have to review the the discussion and pull that out. So, if we if we want to strike the, we want to strike the sentence, that that can be fine, because then the then the recording could be used as as further explanation. I don't know that the sentence is critical to the operation of what the planning commission I think a lot of this discussion was outside of of the purview of planning commission, so if if in question, I'd probably strike it from the record. Because it's it's there's there's still conceptual information that could be gained to to refer to the conversation, but it's not a not critical of the actions you made in in planning commission. So, if if there's, if there's a question and we want to go back and review the document, the recording, I'd rather view that than guess what was said.
Well, my concern is similar to yours, Ryan, and Michael has has propensity to try and help the public out as much as possible, and the lady, and I can't remember her name, who was before us, was asking a lot of questions that weren't within the purview of the planning commission, but was trying to get general knowledge, and he was trying to be helpful, so I I would agree that, you know, it should probably be struck and just let the recording reflect what was actually said, because I don't think that act true, that, I don't think, I don't think lines eighty-two to eighty-six really represent the accurately what was what was trying to be conveyed.
Okay. That's fair, fair, Shirley.
I I would move to to not take the whole section out, but to strike line eighty-five and eighty-six. And there's a still a small summary, and then they can refer to the recording.
And I'm okay with that, too.
Okay, that's fair. So we'll just take out line eighty-five and eighty-six. Then line line ninety-six says that we just need a space in between in and compliance. So it says developer, if the developer is not in compliance, then the city does not allow them to move forward until issues are fixed. So just update that a little bit with the right words. And there's line one-twenty, I there's just, I I don't know what we're trying to say there, but it doesn't make sense. One or more persons that include permit provisions for living living, sleeping, cooking, and sanitation, I I I'm just not sure what, it seems like there's a word missing or an added word that doesn't, so it doesn't make sense to me, I don't understand what we're trying to say for sure.
Um, but I think you strike permit.
Would that include, I think that's what?
The person said include for, uh, one or more persons that include provisions for, okay, yeah, get rid of permits. Okay. Line one-fifty-three should be grandfathered, not grandfather. One fifty-nine.
I mean, how many did one fifty?
That was one fifty-three. Units may be grandfathered in due to pre-existing codes. And we ready to move on?
Okay, I had that much.
And one fifty-nine, uh, we've got they it's just a little bit confusing here, so uh, starting with one fifty-eight, mention this, uh, many cities have adopted the current billing code to avoid the need to adopt new codes every time the IRCS is released and changed, rather than they release and change. Would would make that make more sense to me. And lines one-seventy through one-seventy-five, we repeat the same sentence three times in a row. Basically, so if we can just pick the one that we're happiest with. Starting with the line one-seventy. Well, lines one one-seventy through one-seventy-five says that the the goal of the proposition is to maintain the aesthetics, aesthetic quality of current Providence residents by allowing detached apartments to to complement the existing houses or area. Provide options for detached apartments while maintaining the aesthetic qualities of the neighborhood. The proposal aims to maintain aesthetics of the neighborhood while allowing the development of new apartments or plans for people to live.
So you want the last two sentences stripping?
Boy, I don't know, I, we we just seem to repeat ourselves three times.
We just need to go direction, one of those stripping. It's the one.
Yeah, let's let's strike from from line seven, one-seventy-two, provide options to the end of that, to the end of one-seventy-five. Is that fair? Okay, that's all the comments I had. Any other final comments? Okay, if we can have a motion.
I move a motion to approve the minutes as with amended requests from the October eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you. Well, yeah, all in agreement?
Aye.
Any opposed, is Brian on, by the way? No, he hasn't joined up, he hasn't joined, okay. All right, motion passes with the corrections indicated. Thank you.
Uh, so I'm gonna go ahead and make a formal uh motion that Bob continue as chair for the remainder of this meeting.
Oh, second.
All in agreement?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, Brian? I'm checking.
We're gonna start making new minutes, too.
All right, um, so the minutes are approved, uh, next we have public comments. This is a time when citizens may express their views on issues within the planning commission's jurisdiction. Uh, the planning commission accepts comments in person by email and text. By law, these email comments are considered public record and will be shared with all parties involved, including the planning commission and the applicant. So, um are, is there anyone here who wants to speak about something that is not part of the the meeting agenda tonight? Have we had any, anyone text or email messages that'd like to have us address?
I did not see any, did you, Ty?
I didn't, I didn't quite get in here, I checked, I didn't know there was nothing.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have no public hearings and no legislative actions this evening. We have administrative actions. Item number one, we can look at that first, is Providence Escape Preliminary Platte. The Providence City Planning Commission will review, discuss, and may take action on a preliminary plat for Providence Escape. And we have the analysis, uh, Scarlett, do you want to kind of give us a breakdown of what's, what you found?
One of the key issues in for this particular subdivision is that um, they have to provide an access other than one thousand south. The we contract with Logan City for fire suppression, and one of the requirements in there is that if a development has more than thirty homes, then it has to have a second access rather than just one in and one out, so the developers worked for a lot of years to try and come up with a good resolution for that, and due to the topography and whatnot, uh, the the re- the resolution that they're proposing is an access that will um go to the south of the development, and it's will become a future road in Millville City at some point if um Millville approves some future development up there. Um, but in in the meantime, or if not, if it's an indefinite, they will dedicate the um access easement to Providence City, so it will be actually dedicated to us, and then they will improve that with a twenty-four-foot wide asphalt pad, they won't do the curb and gutter and all that at this point, but they will have the twenty-four-foot wide, well, they may do curb and gutter to help with stormwater, but they won't have the the sidewalk and the hard strip, and they won't have the full asphalt width, they will do the twenty-four width. And so it will connect Eighth East down to Grand View Drive on both the south end of Eighth East and the south end of Grand View Drive. So that's, that's what that little explanation is on page one. Um, they're also dedicating two off-site temporary turnarounds. Um, those turnarounds will be asphalt, and they're granting an area for off-site snow storage for um to assist in the snow removal process. Those two um turnarounds are actually east of where this um loop joining Eighth East and Grand View Drive exists, or will exist. Um, we look at state code for our finding the fact, excuse me. We look at the general plan and the master plans. One thing about this area is, we'll argue to that in a minute, uh, we look at the transportation plan, the forty-year water right plan, the twenty-twenty wastewater master plan, the twenty twenty-nineteen stormwater master plan, and the twenty-twenty-two culinary water system master plan. In connection with our water right plan, in our city code, we have Providence City Code eight dash one dash twenty-one, which is our water availability requirements. When a developer comes in, they um have to either bring water or they pay a fee and loop. This developer actually brought water, brought excess water, well, not exactly excess, but they brought enough water for complete build-out. Um, then as the years went on, we had an agreement that if the uh development didn't build out before a certain period in time, Providence would um pay them for the balance of the water right. We did that a couple of years ago. And so now that they, that we paid them, now they will actually pay us back again, because they will have to um pay the fee and loop for the water that they that they acquired and that we purchased, and now they're purchasing back again. And then we also look at our city code eleven-three-two for the preliminary plat. In the conclusions, um, we have past ordinances that complied with Utah Code Title Ten, Chapter Nine, eighty-six and six, which is a subdivision ordinance. Um, you can see in the um plan, this, the preferred scenario for the framework work map map actually suggests this is possible area for conservation zones, however, as far as migratory birds or anything like that, there's nothing there that would trigger any type of unusual wildlife or anything, there's a normal wildlife, but they do have the uh division of wildlife resources just east of them, so continuing with the residential um plan that's been for that area still goes along with our overall master plan.
Can you tell me, sorry, do you mind, sorry, I don't want to interrupt, I can wait.
No, you can.
Um, about these potential conservation zones, I think this, this is one of the only remaining, I think we had four, five, six in the general plan. Um, I think this might be second to last of those conservation zones, so what was intended there in the general plan when those were laid out?
No, pardon me, oh, Ryan's now on?
Ryan's now, I just wanted to make sure that you.
Thanks, Brian.
I think they just wanted the city to consider that if there was areas for uh property acquisition and things like that, that these may be areas that would be good for conservation zones. The city has looked at acquiring property. We've not looked at it necessarily for conservation zones, we've looked at it more for purposes of open space and parks to um add to our park plan, which we do need to um look for park property up in the southeast area, so that may be something the developer does have a spot here where he's, uh, we'll talk about it in just a second, where they will do a trailhead. Uh, because of the topography, they can't do it right where the general plan shows that it would be, but it will be just a little south of where the um general plan shows, they also are showing an access road in the northeast corner of their development that will also um allow for the bush truck to get along the deer fence and to be able to put out wildland fires, so they are working with us that way, but as far as the conservation zones go, Brian, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then I just reviewed that we do show a proposed trailhead, they are incorporating that in a location that's feasible to do so. You can see on that picture on the top of page five, where one thousand south is coming up, uh, you can see how it gets really, really steep through there, and then if you go a little bit to the south, there's actually a little bit of a dip of an area that would make a better place to be able to have parking and um access up to that trail, so that's the location that they're dedicating that area for open space. And then you can see in the picture below it, on the northeast corner, that's where the access easement, that twenty-foot utility and access easement is for the wildland fire people. They will be completing the loops uh in the transportation plan. The transportation plan shows one thousand south, it's a major collector road with limited access. We'll talk about that a little bit more as we go through the preliminary plat notes. And then this was included in the forty-year water right plan, and they will be, we explained, they will be contributing to that. Um, it is in the wastewater master plan, and they will, as the homes are built, they will be paying the impact fees that go along with that, so they will contribute that way. Um, stormwater, as their uh system is developed, and they indicate that stormwater is to be captured and transported to an onsite pond for retention, detention, so they're doing their part as far as our stormwater plan goes. And then the twenty-twenty-two culinary water plan, again, at the time of the they will put in the infrastructure, and then at the time of the zoning clearance for the primary structure, that's when the impact fees will be paid, so we are following the process outlined in those master plans. They have yet to provide us for the water availability requirements, um, they will get that information to us. And then the title block, um, in one part, on on the top side, on the top of the map plat, it showed Providence Escape. And then on the side, it show in the permission, it listed um the owner's permission block, it listed as Parvance Highlands, it's actually Providence Highlands LLC is the owner, and so they'll make sure that that's clear. The name of the subdivision is Providence Escape, as long as you guys accept that name. Um, there were a few permanent buildings and structures that they didn't show the outlines of the plat that need to be shown. They did have a letter from the affected water users, um, and will address that through their construction drawing process. They will also address runoff from the Um they will also address runoff from the um mountain face and natural drainage. Channels east of the development, you um may want to ask the engineer, Brian. Mackle, or excuse me, Adam Mackleprin is in the audience and he can address that if you. Um have a couple of questions on that um. That we always ask, and surveyors don't like to do it at preliminary class stage. But we want to make sure that the legal description is right when we're doing preliminary plats. So we ask that they actually, not just stamp it, but they actually sign their name on the preliminary plat. And um they'll have to do that um and then um. We need to talk about the proposed names for the streets to make sure they're consistent with our addressing system. Um we talked about the natural drainage, it does show the phasing in the development. And then it says that um. No preliminary plat shall be approved by the planning commission, the city council or any other designated land use authority. Unless it complies or can be shown that the final plat will likely comply with all the provisions set forth in Providence City ordinances. Um and so, and I've talked to the developer, Jeremy Jensen, who's also in the room. And he does understand the water requirement and is um. They do have some water rights, so he's, he's, they're still think, trying to decide. What portion would be fee of view and what portion would be rights, or if it's all one or the other, so. Well, that's yet to be determined, but it can be determined during the preliminary plots. Or excuse me, the final plat stage with the construction drawings. In the packet, it, I included the information from Spring Creek Water Company. Um that they're hoping for, and I also included um the information from Aaron Walker. Um a lot of Aaron Walker's information is kind of heads up. And will take place during final plot construction drawings and also some of that will actually take place as we do the individual. Um site plans, residential site plans, but we'd like to make sure that the developers. And their turn or their engineers have a heads up of what we anticipate we will be expecting. So as far as our conditions, we're asking that they address the comments in red. In the conclusion section, that they address uh the comments in Aaron's letter. Um Aaron was out of town, and so I wasn't able to, he asked about the access. I think it was probably because he was looking at a smaller map like I was, Rob and I didn't see where that access was actually granted either when we first looked at it. And then when we talked with Adam and he showed us that northwest corner, but I wasn't able to confirm that with Aaron because he's. Actually out of the country, so when he gets back, I'll follow up with him on that um and then any um. Comments from public works and uh they will continue to meet all. Relevant federal, state, county, Providence City rules, laws, codes, ordinances. Approved by the city of any application or paperwork submitted does not alleviate the owners and order their agents from their responsibility. That understand and conform to local, state and federal laws. Providence City's approval is not intended to and cannot be construed to allow any laws to be violated. Um and. That's pretty much it, um unless you have questions, one of the things, one of the quote comments that. Um we made is that um one thousand south is a limited access road. Luckily, the design of this development, just about every lot has an alternative. Road adjacent to it that they can get access off of, except for perhaps um. The lot right at the intersection of one thousand south and the furthest east road. The lot that's on the right-hand side, I apologize, as small as that is, even with my old age glasses, I can't tell you what lot number that is, but. Anyway, that, that particular lot will probably, has no alternative but to. Access onto one thousand south probably, but other than that, they've done a really good job of preserving that right-of-way corridor. So.
Would you, would you be able to point those out for us? I, I might just be missing it, you said the northwest corner?
Northeast.
Northeast.
Maybe I said northwest, but Ryan, if you want to scroll down the other way to get me to the north, oh, you are there. That's the access for the brush trucks to be able to get up along the deer fence road.
And that would be for the citizens of these lots as well?
Um not necessarily for the um general, for the citizens of these lot. They would come off of the regular public road. And we are providing this lot right here that's not part of the development, there is um, they do have to provide. Um access into that lot, which they've got there, so there, that lot is not landlocked.
Would this access here be to the deer fence trail, could it go to the Bonneville Short Line Trail?
It does.
Okay, so it would allow to the trail access, but not, not access from a road. And they can get to the canyon road from there, that's what you're asking.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, they couldn't really get to the canyon road from there, it would be a dangerous. I mean, a brush truck could probably go that direction, even a brush truck would have problems going down and over and. Across, they would want to go up Canyon Road and then go across that way.
Okay.
So.
Do you have any questions? I s- I'm somewhat confused about the uh temporary access, access into Millville. Uh can you show me where that is and what that is?
You know what, Ryan, it's very easy to bring the.
We have agreement with Millville, they're, they're going to uh. Millville's gonna.
It, Millville doesn't own the property.
They don't own the property.
The developer owns the property, it's just within Millville's city limits.
Does that present any issue? Like what?
Well, let me, let me see if I, my understanding is, is that the boundary. Is that basically, you know, if you bring that picture back up. You had the, the boundary of where that circle is, is basically Millville City property.
Millville, in Millville City limits.
City limits, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, I, that, that's what I intended to say, but I didn't say it, you're correct. But the developer can give an easement through his property. And if Millville um decides to, to utilize that. They have the ability to do it, and if they don't, then, then Providence, that subdivision has rights to that easement.
Okay.
That's why we're asking for an easement to Providence specifically, not just a public right-of-way easement. We're asking for an easement for Providence City to have. Um access uh through that area, so.
And, and the road that's going to, that they're going to build is, is a temporary road? Or is it uh?
Well, it will be asphalt, it will be, it will be built like a fire standard rated road and it will have asphalt on it, it will be built. To the city's specification assures, as far as the construction of the road, the difference of it is, is the width will, instead of being thirty feet wide. The asphalt pad will be twenty-four feet wide. And then at the point in time when they actually develop in Millville, they will finish the remaining. Um road cross-section to Millville's streets standards and widths rather than ours. Whatever, I'm not sure if Millville's may have the same standard, but twenty-four feet of asphalt definitely meets. The fire code requirements and it meets our um. Temporary, or not temporary, our partial road cross-section requires twenty-four feet of asphalt, so. But, but in the future, when that actually gets built, if it's built in, within Millville City's boundaries. Then they will have to finish that road built to Millville City standards.
Okay.
Yes, if they want Millville to own the road and maintain it, they could maintain it privately. If they don't, but it would have to still, I mean, at this point, the contractor will still own and maintain that. But theirs, if it's, because none of Providence to accept, it is our road, right? It would be maintained as their road, but our a- our access for our citizens, right?
I think we are planning, I think we're planning snow removal on it, that's why they're giving us the other stuff. But as far as overall other maintenance, road potholes and all of that, that would be the developers.
Just, just that portion is, is a private road, or is, is the, the whole road in the development private?
Uh no, I think just that, just that connection, because it's not, not in the, in Providence property except as, as our. Street, so we wouldn't do this with final inspection and street acceptance. We might agree convenience-wise that that makes a good loop for us as far as uh for snow plowing purposes. But ultimately, my understanding is, is that it would become a Millville road. And it would need to be built to their standards so that they would accept that standard, which is.
Right, and so everything that's in Providence is going to be a Providence City road.
Yes.
Okay.
And on, and on that note, Millville could later do whatever they want with it, correct?
No, we have an easement to use it.
If they accept the road, when you say whatever they want with it, they couldn't, they couldn't close it because we own a right to, to access. It makes sense, so they couldn't close it, um there would be some limitations to their abilities. Um but if it is accepted as their road, then they could.
Alter it, could they, could they change direction?
Put a T into it, changing direction might be more difficult.
Yeah.
But they could put a T into it, they could, um they could put a water line underneath that they could, I mean, they could do some things to it. But this way would, it would be a dedicated.
Easement.
Easement to Providence, so that our residents could always access through that piece, it preserves our access.
Mm-hmm, I mean, I'm just saying, if, if there's a loop and they put a T in it. Then we, we lose the access for the, the, the above lots to access a lower road.
No, my T is, is, the, sorry, my definition on T would be here, like where it comes around and comes straight in.
Yeah.
They could, this road from here could, could exit through and, and I think it's expected that that would go through in, in the Millville.
It would basically, it could be extended but not shortened.
Yeah, yes.
It would remain a connector road to connect the two.
Yes.
Brian, can you hear us?
I can hear you just fine, can you hear me?
Yes, I just wanted to test that and, and recognize that you had entered the meeting, apologize for the technical delays.
Wanted to acknowledge that Brian's joined us, thank you. And we've taken steps for me to take charge, is that?
So this. That's fine, I.
Being as, as elected by his peers here.
Coram, that's, that's fine with me, no problem.
Do you have any, any comments or questions?
Uh I didn't catch all of it, so I've got, you know, the, the first one is, are we going to allow somebody to uh name the. Name the subdivision after a verb or after a Ford vehicle, I don't think that escape is appropriate. Since it seems to be a verb, that's about it so far. Uh so, please, please, please continue.
I think that's something you could discuss with the developer and the engineer rather than the staff on the name.
Right.
I'm going to just ask you one more question and I, I can ask the engineer as well, um this, this uh. Loop connector road that, that we're considering, is that taking place on the, on the further, on the northern roads above as well?
Um no, they will come back to one thousand south. But it, but they can also come across one thousand south to the south and utilize this if they needed to.
To the west?
Yes, so somebody lived on.
The south to ten and then, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I don't want that much attention, I would say, so the future. Adam, Adam McElfrin, I don't want to take Scarlett's job, she's doing great. The design engineer, if you pull up the overall, you pull up the overall one, I can show you that. Because we are actually in the process of doing Millville right now, we're going to preliminary, the next month or two in Millville. They won't be able to approve anything because there's still a way for water and sewer, but we want to get all the roads designed. And in, in the future, those two upper roads, they will loop down, they will actually connect and come back in and, yeah. I don't think you can flip it a hundred eighty degrees or just scroll to the top, I mean, to me, it doesn't matter, no, I, I can follow it, but. You guys, if you scroll to the top, well, scroll down or. Yeah, see, where this road is, it comes, goes down, ties in, there's also going to be a future connection route right here. Which comes up, loops over, connects back to this road, this one comes over, connects into it as well, and they all loop down and connect. But there is a connection which comes through and ties into that, so there's a lot of connectivity up here, so.
Eventually, one main road will go all the way down to the Millville road below.
Yeah, this far, far east road will loop all the way down, tie in, will have stubs also come and tie to this and tie to that and. So. That's all it's about then.
They probably have more questions, I would stand there a minute.
That's why I sat in the very back, and then there'll be a set in front of me.
Um, can, can you try to walk us through? What, what your plans are here, is this going to be all in one, one phase or is this multiple?
Oh no, it's, it's definitely multiple phases, so I mean, it's, and it's more, it's the developer in the back, it's his plan. So, but, but the next phase, he's looking at doing uh. Which was originally, and I guess as far as the name goes, since, since the subdivision had to start over again because the approvals all expired. We gave it the name Providence Escape, but we'll probably just go back to Providence Highlands and continue with phase four as we go, so. Uh which will be, phase four will be the next one, which is down here. Phase four will be down here, and at the same time, we're going to get approval from Millville to build this road, so then it'll have the loop and then it'll go on to phase. I don't remember where all my phases, five, five, it's further up there and six, and it goes, and it all, it's all going to be market driven. I mean, this project's, I started on this project two thousand and five, so it's, it's a very much market driven and. And a lot of it was held up because of the second axis, which now that the, the market's moving, the developer has a plan to, to get going again. And. So.
Bob, when you're looking at the, the last.
Oh yeah, see, there, that, that gives all the world connectivity, if you want to.
When you're looking at that page, the really dark black lines are the phasing lines for the most part.
Yeah, it's difficult to tell which, you know, which phases is which.
None of this is started, right?
Well, just the stuff in black, but yeah, none of the.
None of the red.
Yeah, all the, like all, all of this, this was phase one of Providence Highlands, and then there's phase two, and then there's phase three. Up to here, so then phase four will come down, the road looping, and I think it's like, I don't remember phasing, but. But like, say Millville, you can see Millville, it all connects eventually.
Where is that map that we have on the screen? Is that in the report?
Page, I think it's your report.
It's, it's just really.
Yeah, that's it.
It's this very. He just blew it up on the screen.
Oh.
Yeah, it was, it was kind of a, an inserted master plan to show how things connect between Providence.
I just zoomed in.
Yeah. He really did.
It was originally printed on a twenty-four by thirty-six, so you know, when it gets strong, it.
Yeah, um.
Might be helpful to know that Millville did approve, but if you come up to my, come up, or did not please.
It's like three really nice seats up there. Tell us your name.
Open position, thank you, Jeremy Jensen, I'm managing development. Um, it's helpful for you to know that we did submit the plan that you see to Millville City and request that they allow the, this, uh, new road to go in. And they've conceptually agreed all that, and our next step is to submit for preliminary plat. We just didn't want to do that until we concluded this with Providence City. So everything is well on track and both cities seem to be in, in favor of the plan.
Kind of hard for us until we know for sure what they're gonna do.
Well, this, this is literally the only piece that affects Providence, so it's just this little road.
Now, where he has control of the property, he can give you the easement. And once he put, that's why I said, that's why we're designing it all at once, because he's not gonna go and grade that road and then things that might say, well, I'm gonna tear everything out and redo it. So we're trying to make it all work together, so.
Well, and sometimes it's, it's because we own more property, everyone always wants to see what's going on. But we could submit just a little teeny piece and, and not show you all, but we, we just went a lot further to give you a good picture of everything. Cause as Adam mentioned, we, the two of us have been working on this since two thousand and five. So it might seem new to all of you, but we've, we've been working really pretty hard. We solve all these challenges and this second access road, I feel like is just a, a great solution that everyone's in favor of.
Okay.
Okay.
And any other questions? Brian, do you have questions?
No, I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Welcome.
No.
Shall we?
No, do we have?
Is there anybody else, uh, wants to? Talk to us about this one?
Yeah, I see, just for the whole thing. Sounds good.
Am I gonna step up here and tell us?
Get us on a roll here as we go through.
Alright, so are we ready to, uh? Have a motion to approve or not?
Uh, do we need to, uh, discuss amongst the planning commission?
Well. I asked, there's any comment?
So. Well, I thought, I thought we were still talking. I do, I thought we were talking about referring to the developer team. Um, I'm concerned that, uh. Um, i- is there anything set aside here at all? I didn't, I, I think I got it in on the. Parks, we got some extra large retention ponds. Are the, is the developer providing any, uh, amenities? Besides lots?
Want me to answer that?
Yeah, please.
Are we gonna see parks?
Um, so when we constructed phase one, seventy lots, we built a park and a trail system that connected to nowhere. Because none of the, none of the neighbors were building it, but it's, this project, um. Has a park already, Providence Highlands, I don't know if you've seen it, there's a big storm drain pond with a soccer field and a basketball court, a nice playground. Um, pavilion, all that was already completed. Additionally, there will be open spaces and a, a park trailhead or a trailhead to the, the Providence Canyon and the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. And, uh, I think Scarlett had suggested the city was interested in, in maybe acquiring some parks. We'd be willing to discuss that possibility. But as far as, as far as the plan you see now meets your code in every way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Scarlett is, I, I mean, just going through this, um, let me find the right page here. Through this, through this report, it was still a question of whether or not it, it meets all of the code. Is, is that correct?
Some of these, some of these red lines will have, will have to be addressed as part of the construction drawings. We don't ask for enough information at preliminary plat to get them on there. Um, like the showing the drainage channels, the, the size and everything of those drainage channels. That will, um, be part of the stormwater plan that comes with the construction drawings. So they're, they're more of heads up, they've completed, or they will, they. We just are asking for notes and.
Just the water availability portion is all that's missing from that.
Yes.
From that.
And that, that, as I said, they're just trying to decide exactly how they're going to provide that, whether it'll be fee and lieu or a mix.
Okay.
And traditionally, that's done at final plat.
Yes, the actual commitment is done at final plat for the water.
Okay.
Which, which my understanding would come back to us at present, but underneath the changes made by the state legislature. Will actually go to the Regulatory Land Committee, Land Use Committee, which is made up of. The city engineer and the public works director. If that ordinance passes.
So it's a little concerning to me, um, as, as Scarlett highlighted in this report, page seven of nine. Um, at the very end of that page, PCC eleven dash three dash two under approval. It does say for us that no preliminary match, plat shall be approved by the planning commission, the city council, or any other designated land use authority. Unless it complies with or can be shown that a final plat will be likely to comply with all the provisions set forth in the crowded city ordinances. No preliminary or final plat shall be approved if a commitment of service letter has not been issued for the plat pursuant to section eight dash one dash twenty-one. So on that note, uh, and the, and the second line below, a preliminary plat is not considered approved. Until all conditions have been satisfied and the plat has been signed by the city engineer, land use authority and the developer, those have not been completed. So as I read that, it shall not be approved at this time.
Can I ask a question about that?
You have to approve it conditionally, Shelley, because they can't sign it until you approve it.
Okay, okay. That is something to consider, um.
The, the comment I have about the. What is your state up there now? Uh, what, what specific will serve letters are you looking for that, that you don't have?
Well, I mean, that, that's on Scarlett. My, my question here, just for us amongst the, the council is whether or not. You know, conditionally, we can approve that and the guidelines that I'm reading here, um. You know, kind of recommends that, that we wouldn't do it yet.
It's permitting that you have enough water, Jeremy.
Yeah, it's the, it's the information detailing.
For the water availability.
Right, so basically, we just decided if we're paying the fee and lieu or we're dedicating more, or is that right? Yeah, so I can't understand why that would be a concern. We, we provided the city with enough water for five hundred homes. And just because of technicalities, the city had to buy it, now we'll buy it back. So if you need to, if you need that decision made right now, then, then we'll say. Uh, usually that's decided on a phase by phase basis, which I think is, is what you would be doing with any other development. Um, so that's what I prefer, but if you're saying for some reason you need a decision, is that what you're saying? You need a decision if we're going. Dedicate more or, or pay the fee then?
Sorry, um, no, no, I, and I'm not even asking questions right now. I think we're finished with that part of the meeting. We just wanna discuss, um, you know, amongst ourselves whether or not we can approve this.
The reason I, the reason I'm bringing it up is it sounded to me like you felt like you were compelled to deny because you didn't understand the water situation, which. But, that, that just wasn't clear, so I wanted to make sure if I need to clear something up while I'm standing here, I can do that.
Okay, yeah, sure. I will, we will ask you questions if, if we need more answers, okay? Um, I just wanted to point that out to, to my fellow commissioners, um. And while I've got the mic, I'm gonna go ahead and just, and discuss some other questions, some other ideas that I've had. Is that alright?
Yeah, well, let me, let me just say that I think that it, it says here that if, if we have, if it looks like we have a, a way. To complete it and we can preliminarily approve it and it's not final approved until they've cleared everything up. So, so ours is just a preliminary step.
Conditional.
Conditional.
You establish the conditions, unless they can't meet the conditions, we would have to come back to you.
Right.
Okay, yeah, so, so that could, that could be a, a condition. Yeah, absolutely, and I, and I think it, it should be just the water availability, which like, it's. Probably not an issue, um. Moving on, um. I am concerned where this is, uh, an area that was identified in the general plan as a potential conservation zone. With it being, you know, one of the last ones remaining in the city, uh, so I may, you know. Like to talk amongst the council about whether or not that is something we could put in as a request. Um, as well as the gap in park service, uh, there's one small park here and, and there's a lot of homes and the. Broader general area is missing a, a park service in this, in this, uh, section of our city. Uh, another thing to consider, I think we're fine with, with the name Providence Highlands is kind of what everybody knows it by at this point. It has, we have, has come across our, our, quite a bit, um. The other thing that I'm concerned about is not knowing, uh, for sure, you know, that what's gonna happen in Millville. Uh, the last city council that I saw or watched or participated in with this going, um. Across their desks was that it is the access road issue. So. The problem is that all of these residents will primarily be using. Tenth South, one thousand South, um, to, to a- access and, and enter these properties. So I'm not sure if a temporary easement access is, is sufficient for safety. If there's a, if there's a fire, uh, if anything happens on tenth South, there is, there are people who will be stuck. In that residence. Um, so that concerns me. Uh, the letter from Aaron Walker, hopefully, uh, you've all had time to read through that. He also has a lot of things that he would like to see addressed and a lot of concerns that he has. We haven't had time to, to meet up with him or, you know, to, to, to con- convey some of those. You know, clarify some of, some of his concerns. Uh, as, as well as my final, uh, question or concern here, or maybe we need some more information. To me, I can't make out what phases are, are which and, you know, maybe the earlier phases. Don't, um. You know, are not part of this easement. Uh, but I think that's something that maybe, maybe could be made more clear. Those are my thoughts.
I think they're all good.
It's a permanent, it's a permanent easement and if you need Adam to, to show you where the phases are, then the numbers are on there. You just maybe don't have a large enough size to.
I, I usually make it a little bit lighter, so it's over, I make a thicker line, but I make it lighter so it doesn't.
The information is there, you're just.
Okay, sorry, uh, we're, if you, if you don't step up to the mic, we can't hear you and, um. Commissioner, do you, do you wanna take more, um, comments or do we wanna just continue to discuss?
Um. Why, why, uh, I, I'm happy to accept more, more comments to clarify.
Yeah, that's fine. If you could just step up to the mic, I've, and just, just so that we have people online so that they could hear.
What was the question?
Um, you were, you were referring to the phases.
Yeah, all of the phasing is listed on the plan that you have. It, it may be that it's small enough, you can't read it. If you'd like. Adam is here with a marker, he could write it on your paper for you if you'd like.
I, I was able to. I, it's got twelve phases from what I can see. And I was, I was actually curious as to why they were being developed in that phase, out of natural curiosity. But Adam answered my question, so that's why I asked anything further.
Yeah, the phasing has actually been a lot of thought go into it based on utility availability and access to, uh, other. Homes and, and making sure that the community is as livable as possible for those that, that got built earlier.
Thank you.
Bob, were you able to make out all the phases?
I, I think so.
Okay, sure, I, I will accept your help then. I mean, I don't, I, we, I like to keep everything, you know, also available to the public.
Well, like I say, it's like, we, priorities on a twenty-four by thirty-six, then we usually do a half scale of a seventeen. A half of the half of the half, and so.
Are there other questions I could answer while he's labeling for you?
Jeremy, we talked about the easement.
Yeah, the, the easement is not a temporary easement, it's a permanent Providence City easement. So it, it's not something that goes away or, or should be. It, 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 there's no concern of whether or not it will be viable or maintained in the future.
But it's an easement and not a, not a, a road.
It's, we're building a road and granting you the right to use it. That's, the easement is just the document that conveys that right.
But it's not, is it going to be held to the, to the same standards as, as all of the other roads, like curb and gutter? I think things I heard that it would not be curb and gutter.
Uh, no, I, I think Scarlett did say that, but she corrected herself. It, it will be, it will be built to fire requirements. And it will be built for access requirements for fire. And then if we decide to subdivide the property on either side of it, then it would be further developed in Millville City with their code. Yeah, so Providence City doesn't, doesn't own the property or have the right to decide how it goes. But we have decided to convey that right, even though it's not in the city, and so that's what. We're receiving that benefit.
So I would, I would think if you were going to convey that, then it would uphold Providence City's road standards.
So I might comment on that.
You're a road guy.
Um, so there is two different, um, classifications kind of a road to easement. Um, easement and right of way. Not right of ways, we're trying to clarify that, but, uh, um, an easement and a right of way. Under a right of way or a, or a dedication of road, that becomes the ownership of the city. That is a different level of responsibility because when we own the road. Um, as a city, when it's a right of way and we own the road, then we are responsible for maintenance. We have private roads in HOAs that, that are still roadways. We're asked to build the standard being the, um. Off section, being the cross section of the road, uh, which would require a certain amount of. Of, uh, sub base, base and asphalt or, or, um, hard surface. That we would expect because of the transportation and I believe when we talk about standards. There is, there's a few different things. One is the standard of the road cross section of how it's built. Um, and, and my assumption is that the cross section build, it would be our city standard build of. Of whatever that is for sub base space.
Has to be built for fire code.
And it has to be built for fire code.
Yeah.
And, and, and because of the fire code standard, that's a weight requirement. That the fire truck is a certain weight and, and the weight distribution standard becomes that cross section. Now, then we talked about a standard of. When we're talking Millville standard versus Providence standard, which is now outside of the cross section standard. Instead of the, the cross section cutting it, vertical cross section, then we have a horizontal cross section. And the horizontal cross section is when he starts to talk about Millville. Because the horizontal cross section is what is taken care of inside of the right of way. Which is your curb and gutter, um, your, uh, sidewalks, you know, park strip. That, that is a horizontal cross section, which at that point, we wouldn't require. And we don't require of all developers, um, or a fire one. Fire, a good example of the fire cross section is the, um. Fire access off of Spring Creek Parkway into the. It's the one up there in, uh, Little Baldies, not Little Baldies, but, uh. Is it shoreline there? No?
Sure, they, stage crush.
Stage crush, it's on the south of shoreline. Anyway, you have, you have, if you've been up that road, there is a paved drive down that has a gate on it. And it's a twenty foot wide paved road to the same. Vertical cross section of a, of a city, but not the horizontal. It doesn't have curb and gutter and sidewalk.
I'm not sure which road, which road you're referring to.
Yeah, it isn't stage crush.
I'll show you. No, that's fine, I'll show you.
While you pull that up, I've got, I I will ask, um so. Done this down for me, um are the road, is this is this loop, this second access? Is that going to match the two, the the existing road? I guess there are two existing roads at this point, well, sort of, the existing roads or the other roads, but it's it's attaching.
Uh are you asking?
Equality, is it gonna?
Yeah, definitely.
Curb and gutter up there, right?
Same city standard for the vertical cross section.
City as in Providence City? And the horizontal cross section?
Horizontal is where it becomes more tricky, because your Millville and Providence have different requirements for how wide the park strip is, how wide the sidewalk is. Those kind of details, um we don't anticipate building those out until we're ready to subdivide those. Because the main purpose of this road is to provide fire emergency access. And we've, that's what's it's doing.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, my concern here is, or my my question, or why I why I'm kind of bringing this up is that. I think the road needs to be accessible for the residents. Also, in in case of a fire or um you know, for for there to be a second entrance and exit to these properties.
So typically, when a city will approve a subdivision on one side of the road. One property owner and the other property owner is ready, they'll have a half width or a partial road. I believe this is the standard for your partial road, which is what you would approve for any other subdivision.
Now, when you say that, I wanna make sure that you have see horizontally. On a partial road cross section for Providence, includes the curb and gutter and sidewalk on the one side. So, i- are you, are you including curb and gutter on either side?
To have happen to feel comfortable. Well, that's what, that's what happens at final flat, that's that's why.
That may not come through this board, and so we wanna make sure that, we wanna make sure that we do scrutinize it, make sure that everything's there and all the.
Right.
All the boxes are checked and all of our ducks.
Right, so what I'm saying is, you don't normally provide that with a preliminary plot, which is what you're making the decision on right now. So so if you were to approve it, all of those box, we have to meet your city code and we intend to, so.
Yeah, it sounds like there may be a gray area of where where it's it's not in our city that.
I'm actually not seeing the gray area that you're describing, because. The the road is being built to the standards that your city staff is requesting. So.
I I haven't heard that, you know, I'm not sure that that's entirely.
Well, yeah, that is, that is what they've said, what Scarlett said. And and when we asked about the roads, that they're. Based on uh city requirements.
And if you'd like, we can further define a lot of those details here together right now. But but that's, we're we're following your typical process and your city staff has recommended this solution and we have agreed that it works.
Right, I agree, that's that's what I've heard so far, I I I wanted to clarify something you said just a minute ago about. The the purpose of the road is is for uh the the.
Emergency.
Emergency. Uh access or to 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 leave, in case of a fire or something, that would be available for. For people, residents of the community to choose, but only in emergency?
No, no, it's just, it's just a road that will be there that meets the emergency standards.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to just clarify with Scarlett, typically, an emergency access road is only twenty feet wide. We're proposing twenty-four feet, which is two lanes of travel, so people can use it year round, so.
Okay, so it's it's available for everybody.
Yeah, it's available year round, it's not just a emergency twenty foot wide, it's twenty-four.
Right, and and you'll you you'll allow uh snow storage.
Yep.
Uh the the residents of the community will be able to use it all the time, and it will be maintained by. The HOA, yeah, that's a private, that part of it is a private road, right?
Right.
And and it goes into Millville and and we're not gonna, we're not gonna.
Right, it's it sounds like city staff might prefer to snowplow it, just to.
Just how they can turn.
Keep that going, which we would welcome that, uh but they're not accepting pothole or maintenance or other things like that.
Right, okay.
But which we don't accept unless we have a right of way dedication and and we own the road. So unless we own the road, then we don't do that, um as as a traditional rule. We we plow or we maintain roads that we own, and if so, if it's a private road or if it's a a road in another city. So we don't own those, so that there are the different. Every requirement, but a fire lane, what I was trying to explain, and it's, I was hoping it would show on here. Um but if you've driven Spring Creek Parkway um up four hundred. There is a fire road that connects so that that, so that there is an extra fire access. It's it has a gate.
On nine hundred east.
It well, it's cross, it it's on the loop.
Like the nine hundred east.
It's it's off the four hundred.
Oh, I saw, right, right, I know where exactly where you mean there. Uh right, there's there's emergency access with the chain across that uh that that gets you to Spring Creek if you need to.
Yeah, so that so that this could, a fire truck could go either way on this, that cut the gate or whatever, have a key, whatever. But this is an example of what that does, now this one is more of a fire and access, so it's it's. Maintaining twenty-four feet wide, they're providing a. Uh basically, they're providing a private road with with giving us easement access, so that means we have surface access, not ownership. But surface access that is dedicated surface access. So that that's, I'm just trying to curb into, uh so they understand. What the definition is or or what what's going on, we do have some of these kind of things this way inside the city. Um it's a little different than it's outside the city, um but but accomplishing. A dedication to us is is a dedicated surface, so another one we have dedicated surface. Uh so we have an easement on top of Providence Canyon, it's not our road, we don't own it. We don't own the road going up Providence Canyon, but we have an easement to continue access through Providence Canyon up to the up to the. Second parking lot, so we have an easement, we have a surface right. But we don't own the, as a right of way, we don't own the um the soil and below. So makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm I'm just trying to give others similar.
It does, I mean, but it it does make me think about the quality of of the.
Brian, will you go further to the south end of our of that? Cause I wanted to explain what other thing to Shelley.
Yeah, thank you.
So Shelley, this road. Yes, most people will come over and go down One Thousand South, but if One Thousand South was blocked. Down here, people can still come down here, they can come around here and they can continue to the north. To Grandview Drive or Foothill Drive and then go down Canyon Road, so they're not. So One Thousand South isn't the only east west road they can get to, that's the thus the reason, because. If they didn't do this, then this whole. Community up here, if anything happened right here, this whole community would be stuck.
So so tell me, tell me the exit route, Scarlett, if something does happen there at the point of Grandview and Tenth, if they, how.
They're coming down here and they can come down and go down that way. If if something happens down here, they can take these two roads out. So the alternative to Tenth is Canyon Road, we gotta get them to Canyon Road. So that's what this, and that's what this does, it comes out here, comes down, hits Grandview Drive. And then from there, they can go, depending on where the problem is, they could go down. Or they could go up Grandview and get to Canyon Road and then go west.
And that all rides on this easement?
Yeah, and that's why we wanted a permanent easement, so that. In the future, someone couldn't say, well, now we're gonna close it, cause that would, that would cause us great grief. So that's why they can't clearly access to us. They have to allow Providence City to continue to have that access easement.
Well, and right now, the the people who live up there now, they can't get off until we build this. That's why we're really wanting to move this ahead as quickly as we can.
Well, they can get off when, only using One Thousand South, the ones above One Thousand.
Just if if a thousand south above Grandview were somehow blocked right there, there's no way off the mountain until we can build this.
Okay, yeah.
The the pinch point is where that that, my pointer is, that pinch point. Is the limitation, you can't have more than thirty homes on a single access. That pinch point is the single access, when you extend it to connect into Grandview. You've you've now found a route around that pinch point, and that is what opens up. At some point, then then the connection to Millville will allow another connection. And and as the as the development grows, that's why this loop has to be in the first phase, so if you're looking at phases. This has to be connected in phase one, it can't be connected, cause cause the pinch point has to be resolved. That's where you'll find that this is done in the first, the next. Phase, I don't wanna say phase number one, because that's not.
Before any, it's back before, before anything east of Grandview. Can be done, we need to make this connection. Okay, before they build another house, they've gotta make the connection.
Okay, Shelley.
Thank you. Thank you for answering this question.
Any others I should stay here for?
I don't have any more.
Gentlemen.
Brian.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, did you wanna discuss more, Shelley?
Yeah, I'd love to hear your guys' thoughts, but if if you're, if you don't have any, that's, that's fine.
I I see this me, the uh the requirement for for egress. Uh for the for the whole. Development, I I see now, i- if we're stuck at thirty houses. Because we don't have that that egress, then it's pretty important that we, that we move ahead with this. Um I don't see any other issues that would would cause a problem that aren't being addressed. The water issue, all all those things are addressable and I don't see any any way that. It's not gonna happen to to get a final. Approval, when when all those things are done. Joe, any any comments?
Let Brian go first.
Oh, Brian?
Oh, well, yeah, I do. My 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 concern is, um you know, I can't follow all of the mapping and the like, and I'm not trying to. Um but my concern is the right of way, that who will own the property. Underneath these additional access roads. In Pro- in in Millville, that's really theirs, but you're saying that there's a second access road down to Grandview, is it?
There will be.
There's one now, and there we're talking, we're talking about a second one?
Yeah, there will be in the future, he's, the developer is currently in the process of getting approvals through Millville. But Millville is still a couple of years away from having sewer and water, but there will be another access going down through Millville.
You're describing a third access.
Access, I guess, can you pull up the overall again?
Brian, you may not be able to hear this, but he was talking about a third access, and the developer wants to clarify that, I think this is important.
Yeah, the the second access will be completed with the next phase of this development, once this preliminary plot is approved. Adam's describing. Which is the fire access, and it's a permanent dedicated easement. The third access that Adam is describing will come in the future, which will give us yet another connection, but. You know, these developments, they have to go in phases, you you can't go build the entire thing out and then. Hope hope for the best, it's just not wise business decision, so I I have to go in pieces and fund as we go. This next section is a very expensive section, but it's critical to the needs of the homeowners who already bought homes. And to the future residents up there. Uh as we go in these phases, we will have an additional access that will go all the way to the west, I think it's four hundred east in Millville.
Five fifty.
Five fifty east in Millville, so it will exit just south of Hillsborough. If you can picture where that Hillsborough um Colasaca is. So so with this approval, you are guaranteeing second access for the folks who are there, as well as for future residents. And giving us the momentum to continue developing phases that will eventually bring us additional third access.
Shelley.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay, I'm I'm talking to you now. Now, there's three accesses, one is way off.
We can hear you.
Good. Uh you can hear, but it's between Shelley and I, and go ahead and listen in. There are three accesses proposed, one is way off in the future, and we're not discussing that one tonight, is that correct, Shelley?
Correct, yes.
Okay, then we're tonight, we're talking about amongst other things, two accesses in addition to the current access, is that correct?
No, what I'm seeing is this access point that we're looking at tonight is a loop. To to loop to existing roads, I'm I'm not even sure that I see it as a second access.
Okay, okay. Is there an access up into the Highlands from Grandview besides the one that is already there?
The east, or sorry, the north end of Grandview does connect with Ten Hundred South.
Currently, and we're talking about an additional one in this preliminary plot, is that correct?
It would still be through Grandview.
Right, but it would be a second one to Grandview. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're talking about a second one to Grandview, why, okay, so my question is, and this is to Shelley. Because I, this is discussion amongst the commission. That access, we're talking about an easement there, or are we talking about a right of way that is going to be given to the city?
An easement and a right of way are the same thing.
No.
They're not, well, no, in terms of right of way is is a road.
In terms of rights of access?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
Terms of rights of ownership, no.
And in terms of quality of the road.
Same.
Okay, so my my concern is, do we need a right of way as a second access to Grandview? Or do we need an an easement, because if it's a second. Traffic, non-emergency access, it aren't the rest of the roads in the city right of way? And this one we're proposing is an easement, or can you straighten me out on that, Shelley?
Yeah, yeah, as far as I understand, and um. The the that uh right of way would would give us more rights and it would be a better road. Than an easement, we would have more control over it, um my concern here would be for. Like you say, like extra traffic, all of these residents, we would want them to be able to use that road, we would want it to meet Providence standards. And an easement is is not up to those standards.
Okay, so the preliminary plot to 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 night that we're looking at, are they proposing a right of way? Connection to Grandview, or are they talking about an easement? Which sounds like more of a an emergency vehicle access, which one are we talking about tonight?
Easement is what's being proposed.
Yeah, it's it's a permanent easement built to city standards equal to all of your.
I don't think.
I'm I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this discussion is between, this discussion is between Shelley and I. Okay, um and the rest of the commission. My concern is, does, and I'm just gonna ask, does this access, the second access to Grandview? Does it need to be a right of way, where where the city actually owns the property? Defines the roadway, the cross section, the curb and gutter and all that, or does it need to be an easement? I don't, I can't see that from here, and I don't want you to explain it anymore. I don't, I can't see that from here, and I don't want you to explain it anymore. I just wanted to know what you guys understand. Uh, you, can you see my concern? Right of way is no normal road. That's, okay, we'll add another road to the city, and, and Highlands is gonna provide it, that's great. Is that what we want, or do we want just an easement? What do we want, Shelley? What does the city need there? Do they need, do they need public access, or do they need, you know, on a right of way, or do they need? Do, do, they need emergency access on an easement? Which one do they need? Can, can you answer that, or can Bob, or?
I think that's, that's, that's up to us, or, you know, what do you think? I, I think that, that it's a permanent road, that it, it needs to be accessible by all of the people up there on a potential, you know, basis.
Right.
A travel, you know, a viable option for all of the travelers.
So, my, my understanding is that these, these roads are, are built to an emergency width. Fully, the, the horizontal, or the vertical build is to the city standard. And, uh, the, the, everyone in the development will have access and use of those roads. The city will not own the dirt underneath, but they have right, a permanent right to drive on it, to store snow, to, to do uh, what, what needs to be done on the road, they can u- utilize the road. Okay? It's, it's not a substandard road. It's.
And, and. The ownership, what is the ownership of that road? What does the ownership need to be on that road?
At this point.
It, because.
It's, 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 it's going to be owned by the, the owner of the, of the property, of the development.
Okay.
At some point, the, the part of the, the development that's in, in Providence will be turned over to the city as a city road. I, I believe that that's, that's correct, that's my understanding.
So, so why are we talking about easement here? Why aren't we talking about right of way, and just dedicating this to the city as part of the?
Brian, but I'm satisfied.
Yes, gorgeous.
It meets the requirements, that the easement portion is only for that property that lies within Millville's city's limits. And we don't have control over it.
Correct, right, right.
We could, we could require the developer to annex from, from Millville and annex into Providence, but I'm, I'm not looking for that type of an extreme.
Well, they have tried that in the past, and the city council denied it.
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm just.
Because of this, of this issue of the traffic on Grandville, Grandview and the traffic on Tent South.
Yeah, but I mean, that, that would be the only way for us to, to require it. Millville City will, will eventually have their code provisions applied to that easement portion, which is just a, it's, it's a second access from the subdivision to um, a, a route out, an ingress, two ingresses and egresses for safety purposes. Um, so I, I'm okay with it.
What are your thoughts?
I just, we don't get this up, we don't get the opportunity very often to ask for a right of way like this. And what you're saying is, we really, this is really, uh, we just, we really need an easement there. We don't need a right of way, we don't need a permanent road there, uh, for day-to-day traffic. We need it for safety vehicles. If that's the way that, that you all read it on the commission, then great, I'm with you. I'm, 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 I'll quit second guessing it, but I wanted to bring up the right of way versus easement, so that we felt comfortable, we're making a good decision for the city. Thank you.
I, I, I think that the easement is only on the portion that is not in Providence City. But we, the, the easement allows us to go on there, on the road, even though it's not in Providence, allows us to go on the road.
Okay.
Scarlett, did you have something more you wanted to say to that?
I think the term that you're using, that it's limited for emergencies is incorrect. It's being built to twenty-four feet of asphalt, which is two travel paths. It's not like the road on the upper northeast end that is just a twenty-foot emergency access to get a bus truck up there. This is an actual twenty-four foot wide asphalt path that has the vertical construction of a regular city street in Providence. It's just, the width of the asphalt is enough to accommodate two twelve-foot lanes instead of enough to accommodate two ten-foot lanes and some parking. So, it's, but it's a public, it's a public easement to travel on, it's not just for emergency, there will be no emergency gate, it will be kept open. Um, it, Ryan showed a really good one of an emergency access road where the private owner has to keep, he has to plow that after every storm, and he has to keep that open. But the general public can't just go up and down that little one.
Right.
This one, the general public, the general public will use it at will. It is not just specifically an emergency easement, it is a second access built to fire code standards and our twenty-four foot of asphalt.
So, will you clarify again for us the, the difference then between this easement and a right of way?
The right of way is mostly the ownership, we own the right to walk, to drive over that road, and but we don't own the property under the road. The developer owns the property, Millville does not own the property either. The developer owns the property. If they dedicated a right of way to us, they would actually dedicate the property to us. So then it would become our road, our property, that's in Millville City's limits. We don't really want that, because once Millville City approves their part of the development, they'll want to have that road done to their cross, their cross-section, and they'll want to have that road. They'll, they'll want to have the water pipes and all of that under there and maintain that. So we don't really need the underneath part at this point. We just need to be able to use it as a road, and we want it built to be a durable public road. It just won't, it won't have curb, bone sidewalk.
That's fine.
But it will be a durable public road.
So, so this, this, this easement we're talking about is outside of the city of Providence?
Yes, it's.
Okay, then it's a, then fine, let's just take the easement, we don't want ownership of it, it's outside the city. Let me, so, fine, and we'll let, we'll let, we'll let Millville decide. But if they're, and if we get a twenty-four foot temporary road, then great.
Let me just ask Scarlett, if, if, when, when this, when Millville does their thing, this'll, the, the easement will still be there for our people to go back and forth, to use, use the road. So, so that, that's, that's a benefit, I mean, that's, that's, that's important.
I wanna make one definition clarification here. It's a permanent road, a permanent easement. That if you look at it, the difference we're talking about with the right of, when we talked about right of way and dedication and that, is the curb gutter and sidewalk. The road section is not a difference. So at that point, keep in mind, we're talking a permanent road. Um, even though the ownership might, of the, of the depth of the road might be given, we would expect it to be given to Millville at some future date, when it becomes theirs, and they'll be responsible, because it's within their boundaries and jurisdiction. So the only temporary is, is, is the developer maintains ownership of it until such time that they, and they may have to widen it, they may have to add curb and gutter, they may have to do whatever that, that road crossing, that horizontal cross-section is that Millville may require. They will have to do that to build on that. Other than that, if they don't ever build on it, it'll be maintained as a twenty-four foot wide right of way, or twenty-four foot wide easement with the road, that they have to then pay for any road maintenance or anything like that. But we still get the chance and, and the opportunity to drive on top of the surface. We will have surface rights, permanent surface rights, right? And I, makes sense?
I, I, I think.
So one of the contingents? Yeah, go ahead, Bob, I'm sorry.
No, I, I was just gonna say, I, I think this solves the problem that at one point, Millville said they're gonna put up Jersey barriers, so nobody can come into, to Millville from Providence. And, and so, so that resolves that issue. Once, once we, the, the road's there, it's gonna be a road, everybody's gonna be able to use it, it's a permanent road. And the part that's not in Providence City is gonna, we're gonna have an easement to be able to utilize it until it becomes Millville. Then it's just gonna be like any other road that connects Providence and Millville. Um.
Great, I feel comfortable with what we've got here.
Okay.
Any contingencies?
We have, we have another comment that you'd like to make a clarification?
No, I, no, you're. I just, I was gonna have a solution if there was some splitting here. I was just gonna say, I'll de-vue the road itself, and you can own it and give me an easement back to develop it, but I think that's worth.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, no, we're good.
Seems like splitting here.
No, okay, so. Questions answered, Shelley? Ryan?
Yep, thanks.
Brian, what are you, what are your thoughts on, on Aaron Walker's letter?
Um, I was not able to, to read Aaron's walk, walk, read Aaron's Walker, Aaron Walker's letter. My, my concern with anything uh, that Aaron Walker, the marshal, right, the fire marshal, has to do with, is that it's a contingency. And that we need to meet, that we need to, to hold the developer uh, accountable for accessing all the contingencies from the fire marshal, as well as our contingencies and any other contingencies, yeah. Maybe contingency is the wrong word, but I just treat him like everywhere else. I mean, the developer is going to meet the fire marshal's standard and, and deal with the concern, deal with his concerns. As long as we feel that that's gonna happen, I think we oughta go, I think we oughta just take Aaron's letter and say, okay, we'll just base it on this, whatever they want.
Part of the condition of our approval is that, that these requirements are met. Like, always, when, when we approve something, it's based on the, meeting the requirements of the staff and, and the fire marshal and, and other requirements that are that are laid out there, and, and it doesn't have final approval until all those things are done. So I, I think.
Right, it's a much longer letter than we typically see.
Right, and so they'll have to meet all those requirements, and, and I, I think, I, I, I'm good with, with that, in meeting those requirements. And I think they're planning to do that.
Okay, right.
And if they don't do it, it won't be approved. The, the approval isn't done, it's not a season yet.
You feel? Shelley, you feel comfortable with that?
I don't feel comfortable with a lot of, a lot of these issues that I, that I pointed out earlier. I, I want to see this development happen, I, I'm excited for it, I really do. Um, my primary concern here is, uh, I would mimic, um, the city council when, when, when we were talking about annexing this property into, into Providence, um, and why, the reasons that, that they decided not to, to move forward with that, and a lot of it has to do with the access. And that's the main issue that we've been talking through tonight, is the access and, and this loop. I don't know if that is enough at this point. Uh, there is a lot of conditions that they still need to, uh, address. Um, I, at this point, I don't feel comfortable approving it, and I think we should, uh, have them work on those conditions and, and bring it back. Maybe we can, we can, at that point, um, know that, that Millville has approved their portion, and I just wanna ensure that everybody up there is safe primarily, and, and the traffic, you know, I do worry about the traffic on Tent South and the traffic on Grandview.
Okay.
Okay. Joe, any comments?
Well, I do feel comfortable approving it, and I think if it meets the, the city ordinances that we have, I think that's the standard we, we have to apply. Um, I, I don't disrespect, in fact, I appreciate your thoroughness, uh, and, and, and appreciate you guys, it's brought a couple of things to my mind that I haven't thought about, but I think, I think the, um, the findings of fact and conclusions of law and the conditions that are set for it, take into account the red line comments that, that they're still going to have to satisfy. And that as far as conditional approval over preliminary plat, I, I think it would be appropriate. Um, so I'm comfortable with it.
I'm, I'm comfortable with it as well, I, it, 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 it overcomes the, the problems that the city council faced with the Jersey barriers and all, all the other issues that were brought up before. And I think that, that this resolves those issues. And, uh, I, I'm comfortable with going ahead with, with this, so. Um, Brian, any other comments from you?
No, I, I'm satisfied, I'm, I'm comfortable with what's, what we're gonna vote on here.
Okay. Well, can we have a, uh, a proposal to, a motion to to address?
I propose that Joe make a motion.
I don't, what's hanging me up, Brian, is, is how I named this.
But yeah.
Preliminary plat. Well, I, I'm gonna go around that. I, I'd make a motion that item number one currently in top of the Providence State Preliminary Plat, that's subject to, uh, possible name change, um, as to which this motion is, is, has nothing to do with that we give conditional approval uh, to the preliminary plat, subject to findings of fact, conclusions of law and conditions set for, in the staff report. And I'm looking at Scarlett to see if there's anything else that she might think I've overlooked.
You got it.
We have a second?
I'm, I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Those opposed?
Are those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, appreciate the time and the discussion.
Okay, we will now move on to, uh, item number two. Homes at two ninety-one, final plat. Province City Planning Commission will review, discuss, and may take action on the final plat for homes at two ninety-one. Uh, Scarlett, you wanna go ahead and help us out? This?
Okay, this was originally proposed by, uh, Danny Farland. He went through the preliminary plat approval, and then he, um, sold the property to our new applicant, Jed Willetts, and, um, along with that, he sold that, that he could pick up with the preliminary plat, so all of what you had approved stood. Um, so we're just looking at the final plat at this point. Um, couple of the points, there is an existing home on there. There's a mobile home and a detached garage there on the property. The existing home will remain. Excuse me, the mobile home and the garage will be removed. Um, it's a three-lot subdivision. And lots one and two are adjacent to, and will access one hundred east. Lot three is not adjacent to one hundred east, but does have access easement to one hundred east through a twenty-four foot wide driveway easement on lot two. The city code defines inner block as a residential development of a dwelling structure occurring in the interior of existing blocks, a block is defined as a piece of. Structure occurring in the interior of existing blocks, a block is defined as a piece of. Land surrounded by streets and other rights of way other than an alley or land which is designated as a block. On any recorded subdivision plat, this area does not meet the definition of a block. The streets in the area do not surround the area to create a block. So a special review was not required for this development. Um, again, we look at the findings of fact in, um, Utah Code. Title ten, chapter nine, eight, part six, which is the subdivision regulations, we look at our general plan and our master plans. Um, we're on the final plat phase, so we look at, or the final plat step. So we look at eleven, three, three, final plat requirements, and we still continue to look at, um. Providence City Code eight dash one dash twenty-one, because it's actually at the final plat. When the actual water dedication takes place. During the preliminary plat, we want the developer on notice to know that he's got that water dedication and and we wanna know that. That he's got a a remedy for it, but we actually don't. Want the water to be dedicated necessarily, I shouldn't say don't want, we would take it, but it's. Usually better if they dedicate it at the time of. Of final plat, if they're phasing, they dedicate it per phase. That way, if something goes wrong and they don't finish the phases, we haven't taken more water than we should have, so, um. That's why the, while we wanna know about the water availability at preliminary, and it's important that we know that. Um, it's actually at final plat that we actually get either the fee and the water. Uh, so what in our conclusions. The city has enacted ordinances requiring the subdivision comply with the provisions in state code. Um, in our general plan, it's consistent with the general plan. Um, and development in the surrounding area. Uh, the framework map suggests the preferred scenario for this area as neighborhood residential. Um, that should say the proposed final, but it says the proposed concept is consistent with the general plan. Uh, it shows the parks. That this area is within. Um, it's within a half mile of two local parks, Brookside and Cattle Corral, two neighborhood parks. Alma and Uptown, one regional park, Zollinger, it's within a mile of two local, uh, whoops. That last line is not, and it's within a mile, yes, of, uh, Meadow Ridge and J's Well, and one neighborhood park. Brager and one regional bear park, Von Bear, so it's, um. It does have access to several of our parks, um. The, and when we talk about that, everybody has access to our parks. This is just in a closer proximity to most of our parks and some of our, some of the other developments we look at. Um, the transportation plan. It shows this area of one hundred east as a local road without limited access. And, uh, future minor collector, um, so the driveways coming out on it are fine. Um, we talk about the, um. Forty-year water plan, and we'll discuss the actual, uh, dedication in a few minutes. Um, we also look at the water master plan. And the stormwater master plan and the culinary water master plan. Where this low, where this lot has two existing water meters and two existing. Sewers, they would be able to take advantage of that for two of the lots. So only one lot will have to pay the impact fees for water and sewer, because we're only getting. A brand-new service on one lot. Um, the final, and we did have our public works department, they went out last weekend and verified all that, so we're, we're good to go with that. Um, the final plat application. Uh, cannot be submitted prior to the approval of the preliminary plat, the preliminary plat was approved by the planning commission, so they're good to move forward. The. We go down the list. Of the. Requirements. Um, the only thing that's a little bit, and they have an owner dedication on there. But their own dedication is more, is a little bit of a summary, we would just like to see them add the word stormwater system, waterworks. Sewer works, et cetera, because. The final plat doesn't show the underground stuff, the final plat shows the easements and it shows the right-of-ways. But it doesn't show the underground, so we'd like to have people call out that they're dedicating those things to the Providence City. Um, that's really the only thing that's missing, um. So in our, and then this one has looked at the indoor use at one point three five acre feet. The outdoor use is two point three seven acre feet for a total requirement of three point seven two acre feet. And if you're looking at that in shares, that's one and a, about one and a one-third share of water is what would be required. Or if we look at it for, um. Three thousand dollars a share, it'd be just under twelve thousand dollars, um. The. Conditions are that they would add re, address the comments in red, which would be, change the dedication wording just a little bit. Um, again, on Aaron Walker's information, uh, some of this applies to how. The homes will be situated on the lots and we won't be able to to get through some of that until we actually see the. Uh, residential site plans, but we will make sure that as the development progresses and as the, um. Residential site plans come in, that they do meet the requirements of the Fire Marshal's Office. Um, we need to, the applicant needs to address any comments or conditions from the planning commission. And then plat, prior to the. Plat being recorded. The construction plans must be approved and signed, the application for development and public installment must be completed and signed. The declaration and grant of easement and maintenance agreement for stormwater must be signed. And the water requirement must be dedicated or the fee and the paid. Um, the declaration and grant of easement. And maintenance agreement for the stormwater must be recorded with the final plat. And then the applicant will continue to meet all relevant federal, state, county, Providence City rules, laws, city code. Ordinances approved by the city. Of any application or paperwork submitted does not alleviate the owner's agents from their responsibility to understand and conform to local state. And federal laws, Providence City's approval is not intended to and cannot be construed to allow any laws to be violated. So, um, other than just adding that one little comment or that one, um. Those few words into the owner's dedication, uh, as you can see, our city engineer provided the addresses. So they'll, um, the engine, the. Design engineer can add those and and prepare the plat for recording, um, so. It's really close, ready to go.
Thank you.
Thanks, any any questions? Brian?
I do not.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Scarlett.
Yep.
Okay, uh, do you wanna come up and?
Oh, I just have one, one quick comment, um, Jed Willetts, um, can that, that line? And it's the, that you said ended with, et cetera, can that be just added? To and then. Put on this for the final?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's one of the requirements.
Okay, I didn't know if that could just, you know, you guys could put that.
We don't put it in, no, that that'll.
The, your engineer, when he prepares it for the minor, he will put that line in there.
Okay, but that doesn't have to like hold it up a month or anything, okay, sounds good, that's all I have.
You wanna help up with that?
Nope, no, we're good.
All right, uh, let's discuss any concerns anybody has. Joe?
The the home that's on there is a historic home, isn't it?
It meets the criteria, but they have not gone through the actual designation process. But it could meet the, it probably does meet the criteria if they wanted to.
Can I make one more comment? This is just crazy, but we we were, I was digging through the attic up there. And I found an old shoebox and it had. Uh, some students', um, homework assignments, and I guess I used to take the lined paper and fold them, the teacher would. So a lot of them are preserved, but this one is pretty cool, it just, I'll take like one minute, but. Um, and it's in the old-fashioned writing, it's from nineteen twenty-six, but he said that they had a. Uh, tornado that hit Millville, spelled with one L. And it took out barns, and I think there were ten people that died. And, but it's kinda, I, we tried to Google it and find. Tornado in Millville, and I, we couldn't find anything, but that was almost hundred, a hundred years ago, but. It was just kinda interesting, I don't know if it was the Lynn Harst that had the house back then, it was a different name, but kinda cool, just the history. I love history, so that was a kinda neat little story, some kid that used to live in that house.
Thanks. Um, Brian? Shelley?
No, I think we've been through this one before, um, and, um. I I don't see a pro, any problems, I don't see any, I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, Shelley, anything?
No, I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right, let's do it.
All right, I make a motion that we, um, approve the final plat map. For the. Sorry, the, yeah, well, it's, oh, yes, there is, homes at two ninety-one. Uh, subject to the finding the fact and get conditions and conclusions as set forth by this staff.
Okay.
Um, I'll second it.
Second, by Brian. Uh, any, uh. All in favor, please? Okay, no one opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Um. Last item. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
After you introduce it, I have a moment would make on that one.
Without discussion, okay, uh, item three is subdivision amendments. Uh, the province city planning commission will review and discuss revisions to the city's subdivision code. Which, uh, we have received the code review packet to read and review.
So my, my comment and motion is, a lot of these are required by the legislature. And they drafted it. I I would, in forsaken time, make a motion that we have the staff set the matter for a public hearing. And that we take public comment and then have any further discussion. Afterwards, rather than tonight, because. Is, um, Michael's not here and no other members aren't here. And I'd rather have the full discussion, but not hold this up.
Yeah, I'm second that motion.
Okay.
Well.
So, so we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? No? Okay, I think that's good, good, uh, good motion, thanks, Joe.
Can we, uh, can, do we need to update? Planning Commission, um, on the status, not on the content. Of the, uh, ADU, uh, code review?
I I would like.
Just say it's undergoing.
My understanding was is that, that you and Bob were appointed to a subcommittee to meet with the staff and then get back. With another draft, but but if that's, if there's something different, I'd I'd like to be informed.
Uh, Bob can, uh, correct me where I'm wrong here, but Bob and I had a very good session. Last night, we've worked a little bit with the staff over emails. Um, that did not come together as well as we wanted yet. But, um, Bob and I have gone through half the document. And we've come up with a number of points of discussion that we think ought to go before the commission. And I, I'm sure there'll be more, and we are scheduled, um, for another meeting that we will probably finish up. The document that we've been discussing, uh, the change, the code review. And when we're done with it, we will have it, um. We will have a document that we would present before the planning commission. That will have a number of points of discussion that we'd like to bring up and have the planning commission discuss. Uh, and come. And come to an agreement on what the general wording, the con, the content should be in those particular areas. Um, Bob is way off from one direction, I'm way off another, and actually, we've come together quite a bit. But it's very much, uh, polarized, uh, friendly, polarized discussion we're having, and it's. It's been very successful.
Yes, I agree, it's been a, a discussion, um, we're meeting again tomorrow night.
Yeah, Fri, uh, Friday, so two more days.
Oh, yes, Friday, it is Wednesday, Friday. And then, then I think, Brian, then I think our next step is to to sit with Ryan and Scarlett. Uh, kinda go through with them, get any feedback, and so they're, they're in the mood before we go to the, to report the whole thing to. To the commission. Okay?
I think that's very doable.
So, yeah, that's our report.
Uh, questions, uh, questions, Joe, Shelley?
No, I, I'm just, comments, appreciate the work you're doing to save us the time and, and thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I think you both were for that subcommittee, thank you so much for working on that.
All right, any other comments, uh, or do we want to entertain a, a motion?
I guess I have. Um. One comment, questions, calendaring item. Just so you're aware that that you would have. Um, as far as planning, the twenty-second, the day before Thanksgiving would be a planning, are you? Really intending to have that meeting? I just wanna make sure as we're talking that. That's not the next one for the public hearing, I just, as I'm looking out, as as we were evaluating. Uh, the upcoming months, I just wanna, I wanna clarify for planning purposes.
Christmas is coming up, I really need to check.
Uh, Bob, I don't think I I'll be there on that, uh, available, I don't think I'll be available on the twenty-second, the day before Thanksgiving.
I I would, hard time.
Um. So the, yeah, that would be if we were to have two meetings in, in November, that would be on the twenty-second, but. We we are planning to have one on the eighth, right?
Yeah, no, no, yeah, yeah, and I just looking at, looking out, the two-month outlook, just as we're getting close to the holidays. Um, so the twenty-second, um, and the other one that I would just kinda curious, cuz we, we have some things that need to get accomplished. And this next one is one of those, or the last one was one of those. Then the twenty-seventh would be the day after the Christmas break, uh, in December, so those second ones and each of them. Are are probably unrealistic timeframe, just so that you're aware, so that as we. As we calendar out and and put things down the road, I want you to make sure that you realize. That you probably aren't going to have those meetings, so that if you're gonna have something public hearing wise. We need to make sure we're prepared.
Right, so.
Ryan, you get, Ryan, Ryan, you get so close to the edge of things. Uh, Bob, uh, Shelley, uh, Joe, what do we think about meeting twice? Or just once in November and once in December? I like the idea of once in each one of those, can we get everything covered? I don't know. Uh, staff is a little tough to deal with lately, especially at these meetings, but, um, I think we can do it. Uh, I think we can get it done in two meetings, that's my suggestion.
I I would concur, I think it's probably best with the holidays, if we want public participation, I I think that we should. We should, uh, reduce our schedule for all sakes during the holidays, staff as well.
The only thing we're on the timeframe for is the subdivision. The subdivision changes.
Right.
And so as long as you focus on those, you should be able to do those, especially with Joe's. Uh, motion to have the public hearing at your next meeting. You should be able to knock that out and be able to get it to the plant or city council, so they can approve it in January.
It doesn't have to be done by end of year?
Has to be done before February first.
Okay.
City, city council has to be done by February first.
So, anyway, I just, as you look out.
Very good point, thank you. Okay. All I got, we we don't have to, uh, have a motion or anything on that, do we?
Is is, is there, is the code review larger or smaller? Does anybody have a feeling yet is it? Larger or smaller than the, uh, IAD, uh, than the ADU code review?
It's probably less. It's probably less controversial, because it, as Joe explained, it pretty much just goes down what the state code says we have to do. So, we don't have a lot of.
A lot of discretion to it.
Yeah. Wouldn't you say that?
So.
I, I, uh, before Scarlett was coming, going to comment, I was gonna say my, my view is that it's, it's probably about one tenth or, or one twentieth of the ADU process we're doing.
Okay. Great, we can get it done.
Okay.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Shelley, and a second by Joe, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, carries, thank you, thanks for coming.
We're good Halloween, everybody.
Thank you.